Uh, who's his twin brother? Oh, man, he's a huge fan. He wouldn't vote for me. Huge Democrat, so that's all right. We all did it without him, I gotta think. Benton County, I got seventy-five percent here, so... Yeah, it turned out well. I lost in my own hometown. But that's all right. Jesus lost in his own hometown, too.
You're in good company.
Yeah, that's exactly what I say. I'm in, I'm in good company.
I love it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, one and all.
Good morning.
Can I get a motion to approve today's agenda?
Make the motion to approve the agenda. I will second that.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Perfect. Uh, did you gentlemen have a chance to look at the minutes?
I did. I looked at the minutes, read them twice, had to make sure, and that was... I don't know how we were able to write all that stuff down.
I, I can talk on, on that, too, 'cause, uh, um, I was talking to Ron before, and of course, like, minutes absolutely gotta be exactly what you say from the meeting and stuff, and Haley did a tremendous job, um, with that verbatim, what was said, especially with the motion that Ron proposed. Um, when I'm reading through it, you know, and given the, you know, the legal stuff behind it, um, I'd ask that if we could table it for one week and then put it on the agenda, asking to clarify, uh, the motion on June tenth regarding the land use, um, because, like, it's a little vague, and we don't really want that to be argued somewhere else, you know, and be whatever, and we want an accurate record as well, too, you know, and, uh, um... Yeah, so it's, it's nothing really big. It's just a couple of little things here and there, but, uh, just wanna make sure we, we get as accurate as a record as possible, too. So, that's what we're asking.
I would move to table approving the minutes until next week.
I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye. Thank you, guys.
Uh, liquor license.
Should be two of them in your packet.
I'll hand them out to you. Oh, you don't do that.
Yep, I've got them now. Hand them in the packet.
Get that out of my hand.
These are just renews.
I would say so.
Yep, the one, the first one's a renews, and the second one is an amendment.
What did they change the date?
Um... I think it may have been insurance policy or something changed.
No, 'cause these are, these are annual ones, aren't they?
Mm-hmm.
So, can I get a motion on the liquor license for Casino Farms?
I would move to accept the, uh, application for a, uh, state of alcohol license for Casino Farms for year two thousand, uh, what was it, um? August?
Yep.
Of two thousand twenty-five, August sixth.
Yep.
I would second that motion.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
And how about the Watkins Community Athletic Association?
I would make a motion to accept the, uh, application for the Watkins, what is it, uh, Community Athletic Association?
Okay.
I'm second that motion.
Call for a vote on that one.
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Do number seven first. I think that's how I'd have the resolutions numbered.
Okay.
And that one you had given prior approval to them, if you recall.
On this, uh, lost gift to Bell Plain Ambulance, is that the off the total or off of the what's left?
We did it off the total.
Off the total.
And then their other portion, we also provided off their EMS levy, so... So, we are reimbursing them, and they are paid full.
And that is the fifty-three thousand?
Yeah. It's been a while since we've done that.
So, can I get a motion to approve the lost gift to Bell Plain Area Ambulance?
I would make the motion to approve the lost gift to the Bell Plain Area Ambulance, and that is in the amount of fifty-three thousand dollars.
No.
No?
Fifteen thousand, seven fifty-five, thirty.
Fifteen thousand, seven fifty-five, thirty.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, this is by resolution. So, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
They will only do number six, service area amendment.
Yeah, I can explain some of those changes and what I'm doing. So, since it's getting to the end of the fiscal year, I gotta look at functions and make sure nobody's going over some of those areas. So, on that resolution, some of those line items I'm adjusting, especially for the sheriff. There were some cushions in their fund two health insurance. So, I'm rotating spending authority between those and putting some for their, um, the office manager and liaison salary positions, since there was changes throughout the year. There was inmate acute care, um, IT software and hardware. So, you can see those different line items where I'm juggling the spending authority. And then the one was, um, for the courts, legal fees, service of notices. And that was all service area one. Service area six, um, we were over. I need to cover for animal care. That's just one of those things. We don't know how much we're gonna spend throughout the year. So, I'm taking it out of another cushion under dues and membership that we had. Um, service area eight would be the recorders, sheation training line item. And then service area nine, um, my office needed some extra cushion for some postage. So, I'm gonna take some from out of the HR budget cushion, and then the, the last three line items there was some unemployment. So, I'm just shifting that spending authority. So, with your approval, if you approve that resolution, I'll make those changes in today's journal entries.
Can I get a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty-six?
I would make the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five forty-six, service area budget amendments.
I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Thank you. Also on those two firework permits?
Yep.
They're both within the Benton Fire jurisdiction. Chris Stapp was included on our emails, but I have not heard back from him. So, if you do approve them, I'd like to be the stipulation with, with approval from the fire chief.
Okay.
And also, if we are in a burn ban, that they cannot use that.
Okay. Let's do the two permits.
And we do have their insurance on file, so I will, I will pyrotech.
I would make the motion to approve the application for the fireworks permits. Uh, the first one is for July twelfth, twenty twenty-five. The second one is August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five for testing. And that would be until ten PM. And then again, on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, that would be for the Boom Town event. Uh, both of these would be subject to the approval of the Benton Fire Chief, and that if we are in a burn ban, uh, that the, uh, we don't allow the events to take place.
I'll second that.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
I will do number nine.
The resignation for Julia Berry?
Yeah.
Uh, with the closing of the HR department. Uh, Julia has resigned from the position. I think she sent everybody an email with the letter in there. Uh, I did have the opportunity to stop and talk with her again yesterday. Uh, I told her I did not, that I personally, uh, would give her a good recommendation from the county. She's not being dismissed from the position. We're closing the department.
And I'm meeting, me and Alicia are meeting with her tomorrow. So, little odd demands that we haven't already taken back.
Okay.
So, I would move to accept her letter of resignation. What was the effective date of the resignation? The twentieth of June?
Yep. I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Do you want that one initial?
Yes, please.
Nine fifteen. You're up again.
Nice to see you again. Where would you like to begin? You were waiting for your attorney to review.
Well, yeah, we had our attorney look at it. I guess our question is, you know, um, with our employee is gonna be based in Iowa City, our county attorney feels like you're not gonna be based there?
You're gonna be in Blackhawk County now.
Blackhawk County.
Mm-hmm. We've had to move things around. You sure you're not out of Lynn and then gonna cover Blackhawk? Because Blackhawk does not have a hub.
Right. It'll be Buchanan County. Buchanan County's my hub. But, um, Blackhawk is who I'll be covering. They're looking at office space right now with one of the triple A's in Blackhawk County, where I can land on the days where I need to be in an office.
So, you're gonna have the two counties?
No, like, if I need to, like, right now, like, how do you put that, like, the...
Her hub county, where her permanent place would be, is Buchanan.
Yeah.
And when she needs to go to it, to another county just for seeing clients, there'll be a space there for her to land for whether it's one, two, three days, and if the coverage needs to go to the other direction, it could go to the other direction. But her office base is, is in Buchanan County.
Yeah. They're hoping for somebody to be able to sit and do walk-ins, kinda like we would have here, so somebody is there.
Derek.
So, uh, Ray and I, we have talked about this, and, and I know we, we, you, you talked to Ray a little bit, too. You know, I think it's gotta be important to make clear that this MOU and proposed twenty-eight E agreement has nothing to do with, like, Sarah's employment, other than, you know, the signing of the MOU is gonna be what's going to go fund it. The thing is, is like, uh, and I kinda expressed it to you, too, Tracy, is it's kinda, it kinda makes me feel a little uneasy, some of the terms of this agreement. I'll say, I'll say the big one term, that really in the sit, right, is right at the very end, it says paragraph twelve, where it says, like, agreement should be effective, and any extension or amendment is done by the governing board. So, from a legal's perspective, is like, how, if we don't wanna be a part of it anymore, how can we get out? And there's really no out. And the way I read the twenty-eight E agreement, what was sent to, like, all the counties in here, it definitely says that termination is just limited to a two-thirds board by the governing board of here. So, even if you did agree to it, I don't know how you're gonna get out of it. Because the whole thing about a MOU is a precursor, setting the tone for what's gonna be asked in the twenty-eight E agreement. And given what's written here, you know, it talks, essentially talks about us getting reimbursed for funds going out, but it doesn't really talk about services, services that we'll be receiving. And so, like, the, and a lot of the focus, at least in the talks, amongst other attorneys is, seems very vague. And when there's vagueness, it's, it's, makes our job a lot tougher. And, and it doesn't, it doesn't help people understand their positions. And I know that, uh, uh, Ray obviously has more questions, too, about it, and, and the big one was what you brought up. You know, like, it seems we're paying for someone to perform services not in our county. That's what it sounds like to me. And, uh, I know, like, our office's position is to absolutely not sign it, because I don't, there's just too much vagueness that makes me feel uncomfortable.
Is this something you guys, I read, uh, the email from DAP. Uh, some counties have signed it as-is. Other counties have, their county attorney has, or is rewriting it.
I mean, that's an option.
Is that something we would like to do?
It's an option, 'cause we do need services, right? That's not on the budget, is it, Haley? We don't have that on the budget?
We put, um, that carryover for, like, the accruals and stuff in our mental health, but that was to cover any expenses incurred this fiscal year that we have to pay out.
Mm-hmm. I would feel more comfortable if that's, 'cause it's all up to you guys, that we work and figure out something that's...
Can we have this ready for next week?
That's a steep question, um, 'cause I know we're getting towards the end of the fiscal year, um...
I, I would, um, my, my point is, uh, Sarah's getting reshuffled with no doing of her own.
Nope.
She's been a very good employee for us.
I know.
Um...
And, and, and that's what Ray and I definitely wanna make clear, that we, we acknowledge that, but we gotta also understand, look at the bigger picture of the MOU.
If I can, Johnson County has also, um, rewritten it, because they have concerns about the twenty-eight E language. And I could recommend that you talk with David Van Campanoli about it.
Okay.
Um, and that is, I'm speaking with our board, I'm with Johnson County, speaking with them tomorrow. But he did, and, and I agreed with him. Johnson County has backed out of the, is backing out of the twenty-eight E agreement itself. The twenty-eight E really is an entity, not not really an employer. It's just the entity that, that is, that got a contract. Um, it's not the region, and it has nothing to do with the region itself. But David was very uncomfortable with that twenty-eight E language as well. And there's also another county that was very uncomfortable with the twenty-eight E language. So, my recommendation to them was to contact David and, uh, look at what he wrote.
Is he, is he, like, the first assistant or...
I, I can't...
Okay, 'cause he's not the county attorney.
He's not the county attorney. He's underneath the county attorney.
Okay, all right. Oh, we, we have all three emails, so...
Okay, 'cause he would be the one to, uh, talk to about it. And you could tell him. I told you to call him.
Sure can.
Would two weeks be a little easier? I mean, that's getting right to the end of the budget, but...
Maybe two weeks, July, July.
Is it really?
Yeah, it's, it's that close already.
Yeah, everything has been really pushed to the limit with this.
And next week's our last plane run.
It is. Yeah, that'd be July one.
What happens in Sarah's case, we don't sign it, she'll still have a job, right?
Yes. It would be a different employer. And she would start at the bottom.
And lose it all.
Okay, so, if we rewrite this MOU, uh, at the end of the year, if it's only a good free year?
One year.
What happens then?
It depends on who gets the RFP for the, the one employer of record. And everybody will be changed. I, the, when I had talked with the CEO who left, our objective was not to let anybody take a pay cut when it moves to an, one employer of record. They may be at the ceiling, and they'll be held, held there, because they're above what that position was, uh, that position's compensation was set at, until everybody else gets up to that level, or the cost of living changes and is lower than, uh, or is higher than what, um, their current wages are. Benefits will change, you know, it depends upon what is in that RFP. Nothing will change with Ipers. That was a big thing. We have employees, you know, I don't wanna throw me into the mix, 'cause I'm older. But, you know, people over twenty years who have been working under, under this system, and that's the majority of people, not the minority. Most of them are, are employees of counties who have been there a long, long time. Um, and the object was to keep them under Ipers employment. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. It does.
So, is Johnson County expected to have this for your meeting tomorrow? Have it already?
It's on the work session. Um, and if it's on the work session, they may be able to put it, it should be on next week's formal. Um, and since the Assistant County Attorney is, is recommending that particular, uh, version of the MOU, I don't see a problem with it with Johnson County. I do know that that MOU has gone on to the region's attorney, um, to look at. I don't see that any of it was a big, a real big issue. The issue is, do we, can we keep an employee for one year, until everything gets switched over? The state didn't give us enough time to do that upfront. There's a lot of steps. Um, it was C I, I think it's CICS to the, to the west. It took them three years to get one, to one employment of record. And we've gotta do it in one year. I'm already in the process of writing an RFP.
Okay. Here's my question. What, I guess, like, I'm just kinda confused, like, how, who are we giving service for our needs? 'Cause we're statutory required, obviously.
CICS.
CSCS?
C I C S. And it's Russell Wood. He's the CEO.
We're in the region that goes to the south and the east.
So, you guys are with two, three, and six?
Kind of loops down around the bottom of Johnson County.
You guys are six, District six. But he also has two and three.
So, he has three regions in his...
Yeah, she's not... And this is all part of the same thing, right?
It is. It's just different. We are, I went with District seven, 'cause that's my people, so...
Right.
It's just, it's an unfortunate thing that District's, District six got, well, Benton, Iowa, and Bremner got taken out of it, and, um...
And we were all pretty, pretty upset by that.
Yeah. I mean, I'm the only region social worker that it affected this way, just because, um, Buchanan covered Bremner and, um, Johnson covered Iowa, so, yeah.
Could you just, could you just add, I guess, what I call the scapegoat sentences?
We could, uh, we could. Um, and, uh, um, we definitely could, you know, there's a couple other little sentences we wanna add to, um, that can make comfortable, and I don't know if you guys have their email, your region's email? Um, or, excuse me, I said that. I forgot a word. I do that at times.
It's okay.
Region attorney's email that probably drafted this, or...
Yes, I can, I can get that for you if you can give me your email address.
Yeah, you sure can, um, 'cause I'm fancy enough, I have a...
And as soon as I get back to...
Derek, I could email her.
Okay, that works.
Will you take care of it, Haley? Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause if that's something you guys prefer, then I'd prefer to add some language in there that would make us feel a little bit more at ease.
You guys aren't comfortable with it, then I'm not gonna be comfortable with it, so...
So, like, if, if they're willing to work and whatnot, um, and we, we need a mental health person, too, um, 'cause, like, 'cause is Russell then getting paid through us, or are they getting, he getting paid through a different county? I, that's the other question.
They have a different contract with the state of Iowa.
Okay, so, so, state of Iowa.
Yeah, they're all contracts with the state.
And, and so essentially, what is being asked is, like, just this one year, Sarah's getting offset and then getting reimbursed on the back end from DAP.
Correct. DAP will pay for her employment expenses.
We send the same stuff as we...
Essentially, yeah. And my, my hope was to look at whatever her, whatever the expenses are for this coming fiscal year, so every month I can pay you for what it's gonna cost for the month. So, you have the money upfront, not on the back end, much like we have before.
But the bills, Haley, will, will go with, um, that'll go with the ASO. The ASO is separate now, so...
So, it's basically just your payroll benefits with...
That's it.
Yeah, this is, it's different now, yeah.
It would just be payroll and benefits.
So, like, what about, like, our handbook and all that? Would it be governed by all that same stuff?
Yes. Mm-hmm. The same as, I'm still... The same as, I'm still remaining an employee of Johnson County and I'm subject to all the, the policies and procedures that Johnson County has in their handbook.
But the county credit card would obviously end.
Yes, I have, yep, and I've ended our credit card as well.
Yep, that's all done, yeah.
Okay. What do you think? You get it done next week? Couple of each?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, take a look at it, see what Ray thinks, um, what needs to be added. Um, I think I, I got a little bit more clarification on what's being asked. It's just like, you know, when I read it, and if I have to take a couple of times to be like, what's being asked, you know? You know, somebody else is too. And so I always like clarity.
Okay. All I have is, I think you had a table like you're saying all along here, Ray. Get your eyes out and your teeth crossed. Because until you've got something down that you can really vote on, that he's got down in black and white, I think it's a little...
Well, and, and at least now, we've got the idea of, I wanted to make sure of what was being asked.
Okay.
So it's clear, so...
So I get a motion to table this again?
I'll make a motion to table this for a week. So we, our legal department can get this MOU squared away and get with the Region's Attorney and get everything worked out. I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Stephen, aye.
Who's aye?
And ask for the vehicles and all the equipment that you want. I myself don't have no problem with that. If you want to kind of maybe move forward with that.
We're just going to need to basically get a title change for the, the vehicle.
Technically, legally, we should wait till July 1st, 2nd, right?
Yeah, I'm going to have to obtain insurance for all of it, so...
Yeah, okay.
Well, hold on.
And actually, the vehicles are not even moving. They're still sitting out here.
That's fine.
You're talking about the hub and the other ones, too?
What's that?
The hub.
There's, yeah, the, the hub and the, uh, the one that Sarah was using.
And then there's a brand new...
We were only asking for the two. The hub did not count because that was a separate contract.
So that would still be ours.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I want to make sure that was clear.
Gotcha.
That's been kind of a mixed, mixed along the way anyway. Because the hub really is a provider and it was treated as a provider. So whatever went to the hub is the hub's or your county's or whatever.
All that, obviously, furniture.
Okay, and then the desks will...
We'll figure that out, whether we need them or not.
As time goes, three desks, three desks and...
And if we don't need them, they're yours.
I've had, I've had some people come up with some needs for, for, if we...
I just have to finish going through how we allocate what we have for the folks that we have. I think the only place we don't have stuff is Scott County.
Is there a chance somebody's going to need an office space to land here?
No, that, that would be a CICS issue. Because they're the ones who are supposed to be providing the services to your county. That's not to say that boundaries can't be ca, be crossed.
Sure.
And I think that was kind of made clear at, at governing board meetings upfront.
Yep.
So regardless, Benton County constituents will get taken care of one way or another.
And then we've got...
I'm sorry?
11:00 tomorrow. Do we have a Zoom meeting? Or is that somebody else's?
Oh, yeah, I, I can't, I can't remember the time because I just glanced at it, the email. Yeah, it's a special because of the amendment has to be signed for the state.
Yes.
Which gave us, um, more funds for some other, uh, other pieces that the state wanted.
About to 1:00 tomorrow.
Yeah, I've been doing this a long time and I'm not super happy about any of this.
Maybe we can say something more of our senators?
Yeah, it's worked really well region-wise.
Deb's been great to work with over the years.
Yeah, it's been great working with you. We've had a good relationship.
Yes, yep, we tabled it till next week. And Derek will be burning the late night oil.
And Haley, you're going to send me his emails. Oh, bless your heart, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Myron.
Dr. Davis. I'm going.
Thank you.
I didn't see Myron sneaking.
You still had this, you know?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Somebody wait for Ron?
Yeah.
He just disappeared, man, he's sneaking.
Last year, Benton County joined 96 other counties with a federal grant to develop some safety action, to review accidents and come up with some safety action, a safety action plan, um, in Benton County. Uh, we had a kickoff meeting last year, um, and then after they had put all their information together, had another meeting afterwards. And Benton County, uh, passed a pledge late last year about improving, trying to improve safety at accident-prone areas and incorporating safety recommended measures in future plans. One of the locations happens to be the intersection, South Van Horn, North Blairstown. Originally, when that safety action plan was looked at, transverse rumble strips was a recommendation. The DOT put them in at all of the crossroad intersections on Highway 30 when they four-laned that. Those transverse rumble strips, one of them is located very close to a resident. That resident, uh, has noticed the noise perspective on that. Has it expressed that concern to all or many of you? We have talked in some past meetings about a mumble strip that the DOT has. My understanding, and those, I've not personally been through one of them. South Dakota has done a few of them. I think the state also uses this mumble sinusoidal deal on some of the edge-of-line rumbles. Or at least I'm hearing Fayette County is looking at doing that. Long story short, I am hearing that they are quieter. The word is quieter. My question, if that's a measure you want to switch at this intersection from the traditional transverse rumble strips to the mumble, if it's still louder than preferred, how much expense are you looking at trying to do at this intersection? And are you going to eliminate the transverse mumble strips from a residential concern versus the safety-related option that the audible signal sends as well as the vibration in the vehicle to vehicles that show signs of safety improvements? I've tried to accommodate all or most of the other things on this suggested list on making safety measures. We've gotten the, um, destination lighting on both sides of the intersection now. The flashing red beacons are on order. I haven't received them yet. Once we get them, I'll get them installed on the stop signs in the island there, um, at, on Highway 30, facing in the direction of the, on the stopping traffic coming south of Van Horn and coming north out of Blairstown. My question, I guess, would be directed from a board standpoint. If, if we're going to make some changes there, what changes do you want to make? And I just assume it'd be a board decided decision versus, um, if elimination is the preferred option on that mumbles, rumble strip that, near that resident, that it comes at your directive? Because I guess I'm looking at it as a safety measure that's got some added safety improvements added to, um, improving accident history there. Granted, that intersection has changed from a four-lane intersection to currently, uh, from the old two-lane. But you still have, um, a major school district, high school located there in Van Horn. So you've got a lot of students traveling there. And when you run into a foggy situation, uh, maybe even, uh, blowing snow situations, that sound and that vibration in your wheels is certainly an added safety measure that a stop situation or something of some nature is approaching. A engineering thought, um, that possibly could make some changes, both parties, the county and the resident, is, um, if you were to fill the, cut in rumble strips with, um, the pliable asphalt mix we use for pothole patching, I don't believe that you're going to be able to fill that grooved 100%. And if it was mildly left dipped, would it still have some minor, um, tighter, uh, vibration for the driver? Certainly, the noise would be significantly reduced. The only way to, you know, fill that probably successfully would be to mill it out and put a patch over top of it, um, which, um, might be something I would suggest doing if you're going to go with the mumble strip. We were talking about that sinusoidal mumble strip. My concern with that is, as I just said earlier, everybody I've talked to says it's quieter, but it, it still has some noise. And so I don't know what that noise is, but we're comparing no noise to a noise. And I don't know what, what the county feels is an acceptable noise level that, here's where we're going. So I was looking for a little bit of guidance here. From an engineering standpoint, the transverse mumble strips are serving their purpose. But I understand that its location has a concern. It may have concern in other areas in the county that new transverse rumble strips have been placed also. But they were placed there for safety reasons and, um, it sounds non-sympathetic, but unfortunately, there are some residences that end up being at that perfect stopping location where studies have shown here's where the transverse rumbles need to be placed to give you adequate time to get stopped.
Where are these rumble strips located currently?
In Iowa, the only place I know that they're in place is in the community of Britt.
Britt?
And I know it was late last fall that they were installed. So throughout the winter months, most residents along that, you know, route, it's actually at a, um, highway, oh, now I forget what runs through Britt now. DOT told me that Highway Bruce and I forget, and I have an email. But, uh, in talking with them over the winter time, everybody was commenting that it was winter time. We don't, it's not summertime, we don't, there aren't city residents with their windows open, you know? So I don't know how that sound is being impacted now. But, uh, everybody that I talked with from the DOT as well as the county engineer up there, just, he'd been through there and knowledge is that, um, there's still sound. There's still a noise that is made when traveling through these mumble strips. But, um, I know that, that resident reached out recently and it's been, what, nearly a year that they've been in place? And the understanding is that we're, the county was going to look into trying to alleviate that. And so I wanted to, not that I haven't been working on other safety measures, but I'm not sure, uh, I'm not wanting to just go eliminate that panel without some discussion.
Well, I don't know. Everything comes down to decibels, what's an acceptable limit and what's...
Well, the north one's going to stay there. They have no problem with that one.
That there's...
There's two of them there.
Two of them there.
Okay, so those two would stay?
The north one, north of the corner strip would stay.
Okay.
The one by the house is the one...
The one, the last one?
Yes.
That's it, yeah.
The south one.
The current standard that the DOT has, has, it's switched to a few years, just a few years ago, is, is two panels. You used to have three. And there's still three in some of the county, in locations in the county because that was the prior standard. But the current standard is eliminating the one that's closest to the stop sign, adjusting the distance on the other two. But basically, the old, if you, if your mindset is with the old three, it's the, the middle one and the farthest one from the stop sign are still the two that are being used. The middle one has kind of shifted a little bit in distance, but not much. And that's the one that's right next to the residence. So you still, yeah, I mean, in that thought process.
Oh, I got it, I got it.
It's the, it's the middle one, location-wise from the old layout, it would be the second one that you would feel and hear if you were traveling southbound at this location. You would still have the first one. You just wouldn't have, you'd either adjust the second one from a vibration and sound standpoint. The first one that a driver would encounter would still stay at its current, current location in the same way that it is. But if, if the intersection lighting and, well, last year, we added the amber flashing lights on the stop heads. We added an additional stop ahead sign on the opposite side of the highway. If the only thing the county was waiting for before doing anything with the transverse rumble strip at front of the house, um, the red flashing beacons are on order. He said four to six weeks when I ordered them. We're in between that four to six week window right now, so I'm expecting them anytime soon. And we would install them as quickly as we could possibly do that if we received them. They're solar powered, so they probably, probably need a, a day of charging, is my hunch, before you go out and install them. And then they would continue to recharge and have to read the instructions. But that's my, part of my recollection on those solar-powered ones is that I think you've set the charging system outside and let it charge for a day before you are suggested to install them.
Is the mumble strip approved DOT thing instead of a rumble strip?
Um, I guess approved because the DOT's got it on their highway system, you know? It was something that a staff member in the DOT, um, brought to his, his or her superior's attention that South Dakota uses this mumble strip. It's a... It's the layman's term for it. It's it's actually called a sinusoidal sinusoidal rumble strip because instead of squared grooves cut into it, it's a wavy pattern that's similar to a sine wave. Those that are familiar with wave channels type of deal, it's just a flowing curve.
So it's not like a low speed box put in the road?
No, it's, I mean, it's it's a wave that is cutting in, in the same basic length as a traditional transverse rumble strip panel is. But instead of grooves that are squarely cut, it's a wavy cut and instead of going the full lane width, it's only cut four feet in each wheel path.
So it's designed, basically, not the noise awakening, but the.
Correct. However, those people that I've talked to said there's still a sound. It's louder in the vehicle than it is out outside of the vehicle is what I'm being told, but there's still a sound.
Are there any, I mean, are there anything on any website or studies what the readings of a rumble strip is? I mean, is it like 60 decibels or does the DOT have anything on those?
Um, I don't know if there's a noise. They vary type of material, material coat them into a concrete and asphalt are going to have different decibel. Certainly, they are decimal meters that a person can measure the actual sign.
On your phone, okay?
Possibly.
Derek, where would we stand on the legal side? If we remove these and put something else in?
Somebody blows through it. You're getting into an area of law that's not like tort type stuff. I don't know what would apply. I think as long as, like, obviously, there's a stop sign.
What if two rumble strips, a yellow flasher or a red flasher?
As long as there's, I would I would assume that if you can signify, hey, there's a stop sign coming up here, you know?
To me, it ain't no difference on the ground and road. You get a stop sign there, that's it.
Yeah.
You got rumble strips because the main game's going to pass.
Right, yeah, just get that. But, yeah, I don't know that. I gotta say, I don't know that area of law, so I can't. I mean, you've got a lot more traffic on that road. Time of the, the consultant could gather the information, 1,200 vehicles a day was what was was listed as the traffic count on the V sixty six. And you've got 8,000 plus vehicles on Highway thirty at the time the information was collected. That number is probably, excuse me, 9,000, it's on that chart, 9,355. You know, that number is probably continuing to increase, particularly now that Highway thirty is four lane all the way through Benton County, and part of that was under construction when some of this got started.
I have actually had people request to me that we leave those in there. We know it's an inconvenience for the people that live there, but we don't travel that way often, and they liked them. I've had several people say they would like us to leave the rumble strips there.
So to install the waves, would you have to completely cut out what's there, put in new, and in the process of installing the new, then you would incorporate the waves? Or would they be further away or closer to the intersection at a different location?
From a actual operational standpoint, I my thoughts would be to, if you switch to the mumble, is probably put them immediately to the north of where the current transverse are, and that you either fill the transverse with the, you know, pliable coal mix that we use, you know, and try to compact it as best you can, or grind that asphalt out and have, you know, a patch put in would be, and the latter would be the only way of guaranteeing getting rid of all sound from the current transverse.
Because there'd be a lot of noise with the coal patch each side.
Yeah, but you would not be able to put it in the exact same location without completely grinding out the transverse segment and replacing it with new material.
So that moving it to the north of the current rumble strip, is that closer or further from the house?
Further.
Well, mildly. I mean, it would further, but it would be, you know.
Feet.
Yeah, I mean, the from the.
Sound travel to the house.
From the first transverse rumble to the last transverse rumble is about a 25 foot segment along a traveled way.
Yeah.
And so the same is true with the mumble panel. So, you know, based on where the recommended location for each of those two are, it would make sense to stay really close to where that current one is. And so my thought would be, I guess, moving away from the house instead of closer to it. So that's why I say on the north side versus on the south side, but putting it, you know, basically adjacent immediately as close to where the existing one currently is. That requires, you know, some grinding. The county doesn't own any of that equipment, so you're going to have to hire somebody to do that. So there's coordinating and timeline on that. But I just wanted to continue working on that. And I know that with it being the summer months out and being outdoors, it's noticed by that resident right now. And if we are, which direction, anybody has a strong, well, what the board wants to do here at this point? Do we leave the transverse as is, and that's just going to be the way it is? I know there's some philosophies is that when you, you know, encounter added outdoor noise, people notice it initially and it becomes second nature over time. That doesn't always work with all individuals, but, you know, for instance, if you live next to a railroad tracks or next to an airport, I can tell you that studies show most people start to become accustomed to that, and every single plane and every single train isn't noticed over time like it was initially. But I can't tell you if that's the same situation with transverse rumble strips.
My opinion is fill them in. Put the red light up there like we originally agreed, fill them in. And I'd have to get them filled in, sit back and see. I can't believe you can't get it level enough to actually make them disappear.
Not with any work.
That's right. That's what I'm planning on. So I still think there'll be some kind of noise, some kind of vibration there, but it'll be lessened.
Because I believe those are four inch groove that are cut in there. So it's.
How deep are they?
Not very, I don't think they're that deep.
Four inches wide, well.
I think they're only about a, I haven't went out there and measured, so I can't speak.
I guess an inch and a half.
Normally, they're not cut very deep, half inch. I mean, even a three eighths inch cut would make, you know, sufficient. So the standard does not call for a very deep cut.
I guess what I was looking at, the guy put some tar down first in the groove, and then come in with your coal patch where they come along, strike it off. It'll settle down when it gets packed with cars, so it would still be there, but not at deep. I'm afraid if you just put coal patch in there, it's not going to stick.
It's got to be packed, that the material is such that it doesn't work loosely. You've got to compact it to some degree. Now, when we do a pot, patch a pothole, we've got a little pounder type of deal that you just tap it with and then run over it with vehicle wheels to help compact it, seat it into place. But it won't stay anywhere loose for long. It works its way out. It needs the compaction action in order for it to.
So we would, we would lessen the noise, but not remove it, correct?
Fill them up right now and then sit back after your light's on down there. There's a 12 inch light, correct?
Correct.
Red flashing light on top of the stop sign.
And then look.
And then do that, and then sit back and see after you patched that rumble strip, you know, did you quiet it down, which you, which you should, but you're not going to alleviate it?
Not going to eliminate it.
No, I don't think you could get it smooth enough.
We're just going to quiet it down a little.
Yes.
No matter what we decide, you've got to fill those grooves in anyway. I mean, if we went with the mumble strip that we have to eliminate.
Unless your thoughts are is leave everything as is and that everybody just accepts it. But if if you're going to do anything but that, then you're either going to have to grind those out with a special machine and put a patch there, or try to fill them with manual labor, you know, shovel in the material. Doing it that way, there's no way you're going to get it completely smooth and filled in. You're still going to have a mild depression in each one of those grooves.
And it might be, and we won't know, but it might be the same noise level as the mumble strips just by doing that. I mean, then then we would.
What I'm suggesting, try it.
Yeah, and see where see where we're at with it. I think that would be the most cost effective method to deal with it, first level anyways.
Mr. Denny in Ron.
Does anybody in the crowd have any suggestions?
I looked at the highway DOT. The sound decibels between 60 and 90 depending on the news.
60 and 90?
60 to 90. There's four categories, A through D, with category A being the quietest out of 57.
As they are now, I think those things are loud enough to sterilize every cat in the neighborhood. I'd do anything to get them quiet.
I've never heard that term. That's a new one.
So if you had with the partial covered, how much would that cost compared to the mumbles? And like you said, you don't have any idea how loud the mumbles are.
We don't know.
So is it better to take step one, try to reduce it, and see how that works? And if that doesn't work, then you go ahead and spend whatever how much it is.
Filling them with county labor and using utilizing the coal mixed material, you're talking a far, far, by far lesser cost than any of the other options. Because even though that material is pricey, you're not using much of it. You know, it's 150, $200 a ton roughly to purchase, but you're not, you're talking a four inch wide groove that's crazy said an inch plus. I don't think they're more than three eighths to a half inch personally. But it doesn't really matter. You're still talking a small area. So it's not going to take a lot to do that. It's not going to take a lot of time to do that.
And it can be done quickly.
Yeah, the other two, you know, the other option is going to be far more price take.
I I I can agree with making the attempt to quiet the rumble strips a little. You're still going to get the effect on the vehicle you're getting over there. But if we could quiet them, perhaps the cats in the neighborhood will still be okay.
You'll have to take some readings as is, and then you'll have to make a change. You can take some readings after.
Yeah.
Did you want that in the form of a motion?
We're on video, so.
I don't need it in the form of a motion. You have had a majority of board members change. We've talked about it. I guess if nothing else, I wanted to talk about this current board membership and make sure that all four of us, I guess, are on the same working thought process, if nothing else. So I don't need a formal motion.
All right, good. Quiet them down, so.
Yep. Other than that, that's all I had for today. I'm out of town next week, so I won't be here next week.
Did you per chance get the picture of the postal truck in the ditch by the dairy?
I did.
Okay.
I did not find any reports from my staff that there was anything on that road that would have caused that. I think it was driver error. But if I can get a roller going up, I am planning on doing some rock based construction, additional rock based construction on that segment of road here this month.
Okay, good deal.
And just having troubles finding equipment that I don't own to rent is being used by other people in other locations right now.
That's not here, is it?
Yeah. But I need the same thing to do the work on 74th that we have agreed to do for three residents right off 30th Avenue. And I want to do both of those projects in conjunction with each other and utilize utilize the same equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Have a good day.
You too.
Thanks.
All right, I forward to that. You know, from that.
Okay, Haley.
Um.
Salaries?
Yep, hold on, just I want to clarify that Casino Farms one, because I went back to see why it was an amendment. The dates are effective, that is correct, August 7th, 24th through August 6th, 25th. They changed the name and doing business ad.
I figured that out.
So they'll come back in August, then renew it for the year.
Okay.
Okay, so now you're on to the deputies?
Yep.
Yep. And then I attached all the letters that every elected official provided.
Yep.
This is just formality that.
Every year.
Every year.
Okay.
So that was in the budget, right?
Yeah.
It has to be within your budget. I know John in my office is going to be newly sworn in, and then Jacob in the treasures. But otherwise, everything else is, you already made those changes prior to.
So can I get a motion to approve Resolution 25 dash 47?
I would make a motion to approve Resolution 25 dash 47, the certification of the deputy salary for fiscal year 2026.
I would second that motion.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tepit, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
You want two or one just one?
I just need one.
Okay, reports.
I've got one at 11 today, and that's over some budget stuff for the mental health And then I did get in and catch up with Grace with the health, and we've got one coming there on Friday morning. That's all I've got.
Bruce?
I did not have any last week. I've got a Heartland Zoom meeting tomorrow at 10:00. I've got a ECIWDC Zoom on Friday, and this afternoon, a meeting with any department head that can in the courthouse, just kind of a roundtable discussion about human resource.
I had safety meeting last week. One of the things they suggested when they come around here with the insurance was, he's not. One of the things they suggested when they come around here with the insurance was he's not happy with the sidewalk out here in front here.
Up here?
That way. I don't see nothing wrong with it, but, so. It's something that, it's, so it'll be put on my agenda to look at it more extensively. Back when I was in school, I think there is three different, and then a driveway too yet. Approaches from the curb back to the main sidewalk that runs north and south. It's just, there's not really any grooves or anything in it, but the concrete itself is breaking down, turning back to gravel and sand. So that was one of the things on the safety committee. Yesterday I had a, also EZ cog meeting, which was about the WMA, the past projects that they did. The pipeline. Thanks to you, Haley, I got wheels in motion for an inspector. They're out of Des Moines.
I was with the Lynn County Auditor last week at my district meeting, so.
Perfect. I got ahold of them yesterday, yesterday. So I haven't forwarded them on the project yet, you know, but somebody is on.
Did you see where they pay out their supervisor budget?
Yes.
You thought about that?
Well, it's gonna be passed through.
Right.
But.
But we still need to make sure we have proper spending authority.
I don't, yeah, I don't know how many miles. It'll be a contract, cause I'm supposed to meet with a gal after I, she gets the blueprints of the gas line here south town here. And I believe it's only like two miles.
Yeah, ours obviously won't be as much as.
I even wanted to talk to some of the farmers that, you know, they wanted to start here either in June or July, you know? So the farmers that are farming the ground had them in contact with by Mid-America. So I'm just kinda curious.
They don't disrupt their crops?
Yes, cause it'll be destroyed, cause it's planted. It ain't like.
Right.
They left a grass strip. I don't angle there. I guess that's it. Public comments.
I have a couple things. One, I wanna thank for the vote for the egg farm and that type of thing. I think that was the best thing for the county to be done. Safer for everyone here and, uh, the ground. Also, I just, a couple of questions. The governor's detail on the eminent domain. What's that gonna lead to? And I heard, am I right, the senate will not readdress this, cause it takes what? If the house wants it, it has to be about two thirds vote in both. So is it, is it dead? Is it gonna be? Are we gonna have a pipeline going through Iowa now? Or, or what is your reading on that?
It'll be on the agenda, I guess, next year. The way I understood, the governor was not happy with the wording. It was not more specific, kinda like we just dealt with our MOU.
Sure.
You know, she wants it kinda more explained out, so.
Well, my, my, oops, I mean, just wanted to say, my fear is that if we provide eminent domain for this, and then next thing you know, we'll be having turbines in, in Benton County. And it will be, you know, we're an agricultural state and agricultural county. And, uh, people in Pope County don't have an understanding what rural Iowa's like and what it should be. So that, that's my concern there. And I, I, and that's my other question, so I don't know who's it is, the Iowa Doge and consolidating county government. Is that gonna pass or not?
No.
Good, okay. I know it's been brought up before, but, but again, here it is. Rural Iowa, the, the population dwindling, bigger farms, that type of thing. We're losing more and more of our representation at the state house, so. And we don't want that to happen.
We talked about that also at our district meeting, cause like Benton County, we're within Johnson, Lynn, Iowa. I mean, to combine our counties, I mean, the cost, even with just election equipment. I might use a different equipment than Lynn County. Are voters gonna wanna drive an hour to go vote? I mean, combining services and amount, it's just.
Here's my concern, taking us a step further, is with Next Era and what they've done to, to Paylow and, and what they've done. And then counties allow that in. And a couple of Next Eras, because I worked with Buchanan County to keep the turbines out there. Um, there were a couple of people. One was a, I think it was the only person out of Marion that's been employed by Next Era. Another person was a supervisor in Lynn County, and it's amazing how some of these ordinances got changed. And in, in what I've studied for over two and a half, almost three years now, what I've studied with the wind energy companies is they're not always truthful. I don't like, I don't say that they lie, but they do. Um, and, uh, Next Era, and then it was Bright Future Iowa, and all those were, and, and you kinda wonder who in our government's bought off by the utility companies, so. Now, do you wanna say anything, David, that I said, or recount that? I mean, just being a, from the left.
Oh, no, I can tell you exactly how it all happened.
Okay, okay.
I usually stand up when I talk. My dad always talks, you're gonna fight, you better stand up. I'm not fighting in here, though. But I did have some fights with the senator down there, and I told a couple of them that. Here's what, here's what happened, and here's what transpired. It one of my very first things, and it was just almost exactly a year ago, the Sturgis Falls. After that, I went to a big Republican get together at, uh, Calacanis. And so there was a pretty big crowd there of Republicans. So of course, as, as we speak, which I enjoy doing, the thing that I said was, we can't have eminent domain. That was set forth by our forefathers. I don't care what you're gonna run through it, or I don't care what you're gonna do, but it has to be a public good, not for private business. That's the whole crux of this whole mess. But the minute I said that, uh, there was two state, uh, people there, and I can't remember if it was the Secretary of Agriculture. I think he was one of them. They ran right back to the governor and told her what I'd said, that I would never be in favor of eminent domain for private business. So from then on, I got no help, zero. Some of my other senators in there, uh, a couple of them got six hundred thousand from the Republican Party, and one got eight hundred thousand. They didn't get any. They didn't care. He financed it, given how to just do the thing at hand. I gotta appreciate Benton County, seventy-five percent. I pulled out of Benton County, sixty-five percent out of Tama County, and the lost Mountain Home District, uh, Mountain Home Town. As I told you guys before, I feel like Jesus, cause he was the savior in his own hometown. So I'm lost in company. But what happened was, is they wouldn't even bring anything to the floor in the senate. When you go down there, it's kinda shocking. And it doesn't, I, I've never been involved with unions before. I always hustled on my own, started my own business at eighteen years old. So I've never been around a union, but all it is down there with, with the senate is, it's, it's not how smart, good looking, or modest you are, like myself. It's, it's only that how long you've been there. So we have people who have gotten in charge of leadership. We don't have a clue. They come from Republican counties and Republican territories, districts, and they just win. And they've won for years. Well, now they're in charge, and twenty-two of them wouldn't let us have that bill even come to the floor. So what we had to do, believe it or not, it was my idea, if you look on the picture of the Des Moines Register, it's, it's eleven of us plus myself, and I'm in my seat, and they're all around. We decided we're gonna block the budget to even get a vote on the floor. And that's what we had to do. So I was the first one. I was in appropriations, and I started to vote no. And I voted no on everything that was in appropriations. Well, then they knew we were serious. So they threw a huge fit. And in the back room, there was a lot of yelling, you know, which I grew up in the seventies, and coaches yelled at us. No, that bothers me. So anyway, the twelve of us held tight together. And, uh, we got that pushed to the floor, six thirty-nine. And that's the best we could do is get six thirty-nine. It wasn't perfect. It wasn't even close to perfect. So we actually, I, I went to a Democrat, who was from, a Dotsler from Waterloo. They said, we gotta have your Democrat votes. Said, if we push this through, and handle Republicans, we need all of your votes. And he promised me he said, you'll have them. So we went ahead and got it to the floor. We voted on it. We were over by one vote. I think we had twenty-seven votes to twenty-six. So man, were those other Republicans mad. And they were really mad. I enjoyed it myself, cause I'm Irish too. So anyway, as it, as it went on, I said, the governor will never go ahead and sign this. She's taking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Rastetter. I had a letter on my desk, and I leave it there all the time. Well, I go down there every Thursday, cause I get to have a lawyer do research for me down there. So every Thursday, I go down there, and I'm the only one that sits down there. I'm the only one that comes down every week. And if you guys need something for me to look into, just send it with me, and I'll go down there and have him look into it. So what happened was, is then when the governor vetoed it, like I knew she would, I, there was no question she was gonna veto it. And, and on my desk sits all the people, all the Republican senators who have taken money from Rastetter. The, the majority of those twenty-two had. So I knew she'd never do it. So what happens is they, Pat Grassley, was gonna have, have us reconvene, have a special session. And they had plenty there. They, they pushed it through the house by ninety percent. That was Republicans and Democrats and everything. Ninety, it was over ninety percent, might have been ninety-six percent. But we didn't have that. We didn't even have close, we barely had it. So as he's trying to call for that, I had to call to Derek Wolfe, and this is part of his territory too. And Derek Wolfe calls me, says, hey, we're gonna push for that. Can you push for that in the senate? I go, whoa, 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 you're making a mistake. He goes, why is that? I says, here's what it is. I said, all the reasons, these Republicans are not, are not really Republicans from all these different districts up here who, who voted for eminent domain for private business and voted against our bill. That gives seven of them a chance to come to our side, but it still won't pass. I said, now you've clouded up their primary. I said, you can't have that. I said, we've gotta have those Republicans be exposed that they're for eminent domain for private business. And what Mussolini taught us, is he said, when you combine corporations in government, that's the beginning of fascism. So this is the stuff I fight so hard. And when I told them that, when I told Derek that, he goes, oh my God, we never thought of that. Well, I don't think they play chess, cause that's what the whole mess is down there. And so after I did that, and I told our senators the same thing, we don't have enough votes, we'll never get it through, and we'll just give a, a pass to some of these little change of mind. I said, it's, it's just not, it doesn't work out. So then they've squelched it. So now we're not gonna have it. Because there was no win for us, none. And then, uh, so we have in charge down there, the guy had brain cancer, and I feel sorry for him, but he's not a leader anymore. Not Jack Whitmore. And whatever he was before, I, I don't know. I heard he was charismatic and everything else, but he's not that anymore. So in July, they're gonna call a special session for the senate to pick new leadership. But with our ten or twelve, we don't have enough to push something in there high enough to get anything done. And when we got together, even though it was mostly my idea to, to go ahead and stop the budget, the state budget, they went ahead and we had two in there that had been in a term before. So they got to get up on the floor and, and be in charge, and that was fine with me. That was fine with me. But they're just not, I don't wanna say they're not thinkers, cause they are. The one guy was a jet pilot, you know? Smart guy. The other guy's a college professor. But we gotta watch out, and they're gonna push to make that pipeline go through. And here's, I've had to start to do a whole lot of research on CO2 pipeline. Cause I'm not against it for the only reason that it's CO2 pipeline. I'm against it because, and I said this on the floor, our founding fathers two hundred and fifty years ago gave us the fourth amendment that said, and, and that had to do with housing British troops in houses. And, and they said, there'll be no eminent domain unless it's for public good. They put it in there. So I told all these people down there, I go, do all of you even, all of you together think you're as smart as our founding fathers? I said, that's just amazing. So we had our huge fight, but we've gotta watch this, because that CO2, the government is paying through the Green New Deal, sixty-five dollars per metric ton to dispose of that into the earth somewhere. So that's what the real backside is. It's not that they're just gonna transport this stuff through the state and use eminent domain for private purpose. The whole thing is, is they're gonna get income tax credits for dumping it in the ground and getting rid of it. While China goes and builds factories that burn coal, and that's the CO2 they put in the air, our government's gonna spend over the next, I think it went over twenty years, it's gonna cost us two trillion dollars. So that's what people aren't seeing. They think it's the, they think it's just the CO2, but it's not. It's all these things. You know, so it's just a big, huge nightmare, and the people in charge have taken money from Rastetter. The one guy, Jesse Green, hope I'm not running on too far. This always makes me mad when I start talking about it. He actually took money from the pipeline people, from Summit, sold an easement through his property, took a down payment on it, and then he comes and acts like he's against it. And I'm like, dude, you know, come clean, be honest, but anyway. That's all I had. I just came here to observe, but I, you know, I get wound up after I talk about it for a little bit. That's all. If you guys ever have anything, just get ahold of me, call me. I'll give you my cards out too, and, you know, I'm just down here to observe. And then I have a, a, uh, top cop shootout I'm gonna have on Saturday up in Waterloo, and I'm getting all the departments that are within District Thirty-Eighth going. And we're just gonna have a competition, cause I'm very, very competitive and everything. And I thought cops would enjoy that. Cops don't wanna be compared to their cops. They're afraid they won't win. So, so they're a little bit slow, so I'm allowing retired sheriffs and cops to come up and shoot with us, and it's gonna be fun. It'll be Saturday. Three hamburgers for everybody, hamburgers and food from, uh, I've got some things here I can hand out, but yeah, it'll be fun. And, uh, you can come up and even shoot on my team, so.
You can have a loser there.
What's that? You don't have to do that. Just kinda have hamburgers. You can shoot by yourself on a solo squad.
There we go.
Yeah, I've got a guy coming up. He's one of my partners. I've got another friend. He's down in, uh, Marion. He's a senator. I'm talking to him into coming up. He's a cop.
Where are you doing this at?
We're gonna do it at Hart Brothers. That's, used to be, um, the old Mr. Guns. It's pretty close to Harley Davidson on K Line Drive. It's on Saturday. It starts at noon, noon to one. We're gonna have food free for everybody, and then we'll do a little bit of shooting. And I, like I said, I'm a competitor, so I'm shooting every day. I'm going to have my gun adjusted a little bit, cause I wanna leave here. So, yeah, should be good. Hope y'all make it.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Hold a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.